Yes, is Trey there?
Yep, we're just waiting for Chris to get us to go up the green light.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I move that we come out of executive session.
Second the motion.
Motion second, come out of executive session, all those in favor, stick five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Yeah, it's happen.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor, stick five by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Yeah, it's happen. We are adjourned. You need a break, Chris, or we ready to go?
We're good.
Okay. Counsel, I'll call this meeting to order. Tuesday, 9/20/20 at 6:03 PM. We will begin tonight's meeting with real call attendance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Gordon.
Here.
Councilman Haver is here, if not in the room yet, coming now. Councilwoman Barrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Here.
Councilman Hubler.
Here.
Councilman Burr.
Here.
Councilman Haver, you can hear us now?
I'm here, thank you.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Next time is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burr.
I move that we adopt the agenda presented.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda presented. On the motion? If not, all those in favor, stick five by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Yeah, it's happen. Next time is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burr.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the court to attach.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, stick five by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Yeah, it's happen. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so item number nine, resolution. And under that, we have resolution 20 dash 2231. Counsel, this is a resolution reappointing some of our outstanding young members of our commissions. These were people that were on last year and are going, we are moving them forward to continue for another year. You may have seen a press release go out for additional appointments, but we will make those as soon as we have final candidates. But we want to keep our commissions as full as we can, so we want to bring these forward to the CEP. So I would be happy to take any questions or comments, otherwise, vote motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burr.
I move that we approve resolution 20 dash 2231, we're on the resolution to appoint Brian Fitzgerald, or reappoint Brian Fitzgerald to the Meridian Historical Preservation Commission, Isabel Cow to the Meridian Solid Waste Commission, and Joseph Leckie to the Meridian Transportation Commission.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to approve resolution 20 dash 2231. There any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, stick five by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Yeah, it's happen. Isabel? Would you like to say anything about your reappointments at this point in time? You don't have to, it's only if you'd like to. If you want to come up so they can pick you up.
I just wanted to say thank you for my reappointment, and I'm excited for this next year.
Aye. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Schrader?
I just want to say, Isabel, thank you so much for your service so far on the Solid Waste Commission, and what an asset you are to have on that commission, so thanks.
All right. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like or not, your choice. Moving on, under action items, item 10 is a public hearing for Friends Plaza, tech 2020 dash 002. I will go ahead and open this public hearing with staff comments and turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate being here tonight. As noted, item number 10 is for the Friends Plaza time extension. It is a site that consists of 15.92 acres of land currently zoned CC, and is located at the northwest corner of East Amity and South Eagle. Let me pull up, share my presentation for you guys, apologize. I haven't done this for my office yet. Oh boy, something's happening. There we go. The adjacent land uses to this site are residential in all directions that directly adjacent, that are directly abutting the site. To the south is counties owned RUT land that is also residential with some ag uses, as is apparent on the aerial photo. The comprehensive plan designation is a mixed-use community. There is a history of different applications here. It was annexed in 2016 with a compliance amendment, amendment, and a preliminary plat and a recorded development agreement. There was a CCC approved in 2017 that is now expired, a time extension done in 2019, and the final plat was also done in 2019. The summary of the request before you is the preliminary plat time extension. This project was approved by city council on February 7th, 2016, and was valid for two years prior to the expiration date. An administrative time extension was requested and approved by the director on March 22nd, 2019, which granted an 18-month time extension until August 2020. In order to obtain the city engineer's signature on the final plat that was approved by city council in July 2019, the reason for the previous time extension was due to an increase in construction costs, coordination with ACHD, and overall labor shortage, both in the construction industry and in employment for the new Albertson store. According to the submitted narrative in 2019, prior to expiration of the previous time extension, the applicant submitted a request for this subsequent time extension. The reasons for this latest request for the applicant's narrative are the same as the previous ones listed. Since the preliminary plat, final plat, and previous time extension were approved, there have not been any city code changes that would necessitate new conditions being placed on the plat. The only change in relation to this plat is the design of the intersection at Eagle and Amity. The applicant should continue working closely with ACHD on the latest construction plans, which are currently at 99% completion for the plan aroundabout, to ensure minimal changes to the plat. These plans are now to bid by ACHD, and they are moving forward with their proposed design. One of the relevant changes in the roundabout design is a 10-foot attached 10-foot attached sidewalk rather than a 10-foot detached sidewalk as approved with the final plat. This change requires landscape buffer to be measured from the back of sidewalk rather than from back of curb as required by code. The applicant may need to add additional land area to fully comply with the landscape buffer requirements or request alternative compliance with the new CCC application to reduce this buffer. Regardless, the applicant will be required to construct the landscape buffers along Amity and Eagle and all other associated furniture improvements with phase one as required with the final plat and recorded DA. The existing development agreement between the applicant and the city allows one right-in and right-out access to Amity Road and one to Eagle Road from the commercial portion of the property. ACHD has also approved these accesses previously, but with the CCC and not the plat. The CCC has since expired, as noted. Although the DA allows the two accesses, ACHD has the authority to reevaluate the access due to the expired CCC. The latest design affects driveway locations for the subject site, and ACHD will evaluate the driveway locations during the review of the new CCC application. In addition, with the preliminary plat approval in 2016, ACHD required that the applicant enter into a cooperative development agreement with ACHD for the widening of the roundabout at Eagle and Amity and the widening of Eagle Road. According to ACHD, the applicant could not commit to constructing the improvements and provide a timeframe for the development. These were the determining factors as to why the agreement was terminated in 2019. It is also important to note that building division still allows the applicant, still shows the applicant having active building permits for this project. The applicant will be required to submit for a new CCC and design review approval, including site and landscape plans to the city before commencing with construction, as required with the preliminary plat. Approval of the subject time extension will allow the applicant to work with ACHD on any relevant changes with the roundabout design and obtain the city engineer's signature on the final plat, proceed with development with the property. ACHD and city staff are not recommending any new plat conditions of approval to be incorporated with this project. However, the applicant is required to comply with all previous conditions of approval, approved with the development of the subject property, including the requirement to obtain new CCC and design review approvals prior to any construction. Staff would like to note, like to note that time extensions are only required to comply with current city code and not ACHD requirements. Staff recommends approval of the time extension application with no additional conditions of approval for an 18th month, 18-month time extension as requested by the applicant. And I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Councilwoman Schrader?
Thank you very much, Joe. Just maybe two questions and more background information for me. Are there laws or other ordinances and regulations that make it so that the applicant will need to work with ACHD and comply independently with their intentions regarding the intersection? Is my first question. And my second question is just generally with these time extensions, I'm assuming that if we extend the time, that they still have to now comply with whatever our updated requirements are at the time that we extend. Is that correct?
Thank you, counsel administrator, members of the council. So I'll answer your second one first because it's a little simpler. The, no code has changed since the preliminary plat and final plat were approved, so this time extension application and my staff report would have been the time to recommend any additional conditions. So as of right now, no, there will not be any new conditions. They'll just have to meet what was previously approved. Your first question, they, in our CCCs and our code in general, we afford ourselves the opportunity to, I should say, afford the applicant the opportunity to resubmit any site plans that might change if ACHD widens a road later or ACHD decides to do anything within their right-of-way. Is my understanding that they will not need any new right-of-way? So there shouldn't be much change to the site plan that was already approved with the previous preliminary plat, final plat, and the old CCC. Unfortunately, CCCs do not have time extensions, so they will have to reapply for a new one. And if the ACHD new design has changed anything, that's where we will catch it. And that's why we offer ourselves, we give ourselves that power in the CCC to say, hey, if ACHD changes this, then you have to resubmit the plans to us.
Thank you, perfect.
You're welcome.
Counsel, while we're on this slide, just so you're aware, this is a new slide that's being implemented by the planning staff in these development applications that shows the road improvements. That you can see there, those numbers show the year of the road improvement that's being done by ACHD as well as other development activity and where it is in its process. So you have a larger picture about what's occurring in this area.
Fantastic.
If you guys have any recommendations or questions regarding that, feel free to ask me. I'm the one that was tasked with making it, so shoot me an email anytime.
Any additional questions for Joe at this time, counsel? Okay, thank you very much. My D.C. applicant's representative is on the line and ready to go, so Mr. Thompson, you'll be recognized for 15 minutes. Say your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tamara Thompson. I'm with the Land Group, and I'm representing the this time extension. I do have a short PowerPoint, just like three or four slides, if that's okay, if I can, can share my screen.
You can do that now.
Okay, are you guys seeing my screen? This is the Forensa Plaza subdivision. The parcel consists of 115.92 acre parcel, which is zoned CC in Meridian. Here's the layout. The pre-plat consists of 14 commercial lots, which breaks down to 11 building lots, two common lots, and then one large lot, which ends up being the public right, which for ACHD. We're testing an 18-month time extension. And part of that is Albertson's had the opportunity to develop a flagship location in the Meridian Crossroads Mall after obtaining approval for this, and it required immediate action and a significant investment. So part of their resources were pulled away for that project. Currently, we have permits for, that are available at the building department, although we do need to go back and reactivate the CEP in the design review before we can pull those permits. But they are ready to go with the city building department. And we anticipate being able to start construction the first quarter of next year. This is dependent on getting through the CCC. Councilwoman Schrader's, Schrader's question. There is your checks and balance for ACHD other than the CCC, and that is that ACHD does sign the final plat, so that goes to them for their review. Look at that, look at that re-activated, and with that, I'll stand for questions.
Tamara, just so you know, we've kind of lost everything you said after ACHD signing the final plat. If you can restate, if you have anything of substance in that last portion?
Okay, sorry about that. We are working on our CCC application, and we will submit that next week. The building permits are ready at the Meridian Building Department, but we do need the CCC to be reactive because of that timeline. But we will be next year, which is 2021. But with that, I, we request your approval tonight, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much. We do have some people here in the audience. I don't know if anyone was signed up to testify. Only the applicant had, but you do have the people here in the room. If anyone would like to testify on this, this public hearing, if anyone would like to testify on this item, I'd ask you to come forward and state your name and address for the record, if you recognize the correct three minutes. Probably about here, I think they could hear you. Do we have anybody in the Zoom? You do have two people to testify.
Hello, I'm a counsel. My name is Connie Moss, M.A.U.S. I live at 2682 East Mount Evans Drive in Tuscany South Division. And the reason I'm here is I did attend all those meetings to get approval early on, almost, well, six and a half years ago. And I just would like to say, I know that they're asking for an extension, but when we get to that time period again, will there be another extension? We have more than a thousand new people living in our area, as you well know. On the corners of Amity and Eagle, we have Zephi Farm, we have Tuscany, we have others in the surrounding, Mary Hills, Dale, all that. So I'm just saying, there was such a rush by everyone to get that Forensa Plaza promoted early on, and now it's forever, and I know, I understand monies. I understand that the marketplace was expensive. It was a deep investment into the community. But we have no service stations, we have no grocery stores, we have a drugstore. That's what we have to service everybody in that area. Now, if we need to go to a grocery store, to the marketplace, it's about 4.5 miles. If we go to the other Albertson's, it's about four miles. If we come into Meridian, it's even harder. So I'm just saying, not that I'm trying, would want to be an obstacle, I'm just saying, they were in a hurry. We are now asking for some due justice in having some commodities available to us in commerce. That's all we're asking for, and done in a nice way.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
No questions. Appreciate the testimony.
Is there anybody else who'd like to testify on this item? If you can come forward and state your name and address. If there's anybody on the Zoom call that would like to testify, please indicate by using the raise your hand feature so we can bring you in and have you testify as well. State your name and address, please.
My name is, sorry, yeah. My name is Mario Martinez. I live at 2251 East Grayson Street. My wife has lived here for 12 years or so, and I just moved into the area, and then we bought a new house. So I guess my question would be, first, in regards to the roundabout, it gets rather congested, obviously during high traffic times, with the new construction going in for the store and everything. Has there been studies done as far as traffic for the roundabout? Is that the best option, or is the traffic like more in need? As the grocery store comes in, it's obviously going to bring more people. So I'm just curious as to that. And then my second question, has there been a a light pollution study done? It is a rather quiet neighborhood, and then it's nice the way it is now, so I just was curious, has there been a light pollution study done?
Okay, that is it. Thank you. And if counsel has any questions, we'll have you come up. Maybe we can have either Tamara? Well, I guess never mind, we wait until she comes up. But counsel, anybody like to answer, or Joe, if you have any comments on those questions? I can speak to the roundabout, but I'd let other people go first.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Joe.
So to answer the gentleman's question regarding the, the light pollution study, that specifically is not being done, but when they do a CCC, they have to submit photometric plans that show and prove that there is no light trespassing. In addition, we have our standard code that requires all of the lights, as long as they're not streetlights, public streetlights, to be downlit, so there should be no light pollution. So I hope that helps the gentleman feel better about that.
Joe, do you feel like you're in a position to talk about what ACHD is looking at in terms of the changes with the roundabout? Or would you like me to talk about those?
Mr. Mayor, I, I am in a way, but I prefer not to, just because the, the time extension sort of is unrelated, but I just wanted to make sure that we, we stick to the script on that one.
Okay. Yeah, I can't say if the traffic, where the traffic study has been done by the applicant or the issue. ACHD has proposed at least a slip lane at that roundabout, so expand it to a two-lane and put in a slip lane for traffic to go west on Amity from Eagle Road. Anything I said about the light versus the roundabout would be a personal opinion. So I'll say that from that standpoint. But we do have just the lookers from ACHD on as well. If he has anything to make, like to add as far as the traffic study analysis that'd be pertinent to the individual question.
Mr. Mayor, I'm here if you can hear me.
We can't, thanks, Justin.
Yeah, glad to respond and add what I'm able to. When the, you know, a roundabout has always been anticipated at this intersection, including within the traffic study performed by the applicant during the original approval of the Albertson store and subsequent traffic analysis that ACHD has done as we have designed that roundabout because the applicant was unable to do so. So the short answer is yes, traffic analysis has been done. Traffic analysis is what created the decision related to that slip lane that you mentioned. And ACHD, you know, there's a roundabout there now, and we're confident that a roundabout is a safe and proper solution for that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Do we have anyone that raised their hand to testify? None yet, oh, we do now, okay. Anne Burke, I'm bringing you in, so you'll be able to speak. Anne, if you can say your name and address for the record, please. You'll need to unmute your mic.
Anne Albertson.
If you can say your name and address for the record. You're, you're good to go now, we can hear you. But say your name and address for the record and restart.
My name is Anne Burke, and I live at 4686 South Strumboli Place in Tuscany, which is Meridian 83642. We live right off of Montague Drive. My question is, is the holdup with Albertson's that they're changing the design of the store to be more of a marketplace? And that is why part of this is changing as far as the extension?
Anne, I think we'll have to ask the applicant to answer that when they come back up and can provide that information.
Okay.
Did you have any other questions or at this time?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you. I see anyone else to raise your hand to testify at this time? Mr. Mayor? I think there's one additional person I've not seen a hand. Well, with that, then I would go ahead and ask the applicant for any final remarks at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again, Tamara Thompson with the Land Group. I'm not sure, I addressed earlier, it's 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle. I did have, I wrote down some comments here, so I'll try to address all of them. The timeline, we were approved in 2017, so not six years ago, as was mentioned. It's been a little over three years. The, the CCC that we will be submitting includes both the grocery store and a service station. And the store is a new prototype, and it has elements of the marketplace, but not, not as, as though it's a little bit smaller. But it does have elements of a, of a marketplace, but this one is a new prototype for this, for this area. So it's kind of exciting that they're, they're the newest, latest, is Meridian. As far as the traffic studies, that, Justin, thank you for answering that. We, we did do a traffic study, and the roundabout has always been part of that study that Study that. And then as far as light pollution, we have an approved photometric plan that we submitted previously. We will be resubmitting that again with the C Z C. But like Joe's. And, and the approval. These code guidelines. The, let's see. I think that may be everything that I, that was asked. Let me know if I missed something. And otherwise, again, we respectfully request your approval of the time extension and I'm available for any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor, quick one.
Council administrator.
Thanks, Tamara. I was just curious, I mean, the folks in this area are pretty desperate to get a grocery store. Could you clarify if this is a bill to suit specifically for Albertson's or if for some reason the timeframe were to change? Is it possible that another grocer would come before us as a possible tenant later down the road?
Mayor, councilwoman Schrader, this property is owned by Albertson's and they have every intention of.
Great, thank you. So folks should let Albertson's know how much they want that grocery store.
Council, anything else? Okay, thank you very much. So with that, council. I'll open this up for any further comments or motions that people would like to make at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holcomb.
I move that we close the public hearing for T E C C twenty twenty dash zero 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 two.
Second motion.
And the motion, closing the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, stick five by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed nay? The eyes have it.
Mr. Mayor. Well, after hearing all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move that we approve an eighteen month time extension for T E C C dash twenty twenty dash zero zero two. As presented in the staff report this evening. No, I, yeah, this evening, October or September twenty ninth. What month are we in? September twenty ninth.
Mr. Mayor. I'll second that motion in September.
I have a motion of second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll call the roll. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, board.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries and it is agreed to. But thank you, it wants to be. Hope to get some issues resolved around traffic and transportation in the area and time is to the best of our ability to get that done. Our next act, child is under ordinance, ordinance number twenty dash eighteen ninety seven. I will ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's ordinance related to H twenty nineteen zero zero two seven, the lot subdivision for annexation of a parcel of land, being a portion of lot three, block one of Jasmine Acres. As shown in book fifty nine, plat's page five thousand eight hundred twenty nine, Ada County records. And a portion of the southeast one quarter of section thirty two township four north, range one east, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, west of fine, the map published here with. Establishing determining the land zoning classification from R U T to R eight, medium density residential three point three one acres. R fifteen medium, medium high density residential eight point one two acres and R forty high density residential three point seven nine acres zoning districts. Providing the copy of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County assessor and the Ada County recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing an effective.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Council, you've heard this item read by title. Is there anyone who would like it read in its entirety? If not, I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor. I'm having a difficult time hearing, but it sounds like it's time to make a motion.
Yes.
Okay, I'll do so. I move that we approve ordinance number two zero one eight nine seven with a suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve this item under suspension of the rule. If not, all those in favor, take five by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The eyes have it. Council, anything on our feature meeting topics? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I'm moving to adjourn the meeting.
Second the motion.
I have a motion of second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, six five by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The eyes have it. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Appreciate you making this work.